Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, February 7th, 2019. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
..............................................................................
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the committee? Okay. We'll move on to good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share?
There's a PTA meeting at 6:30 on February 14th.
Twelve.
High school.
Oh, middle school, sorry.
You can't hear me?
No.
No?
Oh, maybe it wasn't on. Okay. We'll try this again. February 12th, PTA meeting at 6:30. The middle school will be having their high honor roll breakfast on February 14th, and we have vacations starting February 18th to the 22nd. I also would like to share with you that CPC has moved forward the grant possibility for $200,000 to help resurface the track. We're in the process of meeting with the Board of Selectmen and we feel very grateful to the CPC for allowing this to move forward. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting. I didn't welcome Jeff, so welcome Jeff to the committee. He's filling in. He's serving on the committee for the next two months, so we're really happy to have you. So, thank you.
Can I say very quickly?
Sure, of course.
I just want to, first of all, thank the school committee and the Board of Selectmen for the support they showed with this two-month appointment. I can assure everybody who is here or watching that it's an honor and always has been to be a part of this committee, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the student representative, Emily.
Hello. All right, so spring sports. Is this on? Right? Okay. Practices will be starting in mid-March, so start thinking about going to games to support high school sports, right? The high school student council will be setting up a lip dub. For those of you who don't know what that is, a lip dub is a stage in lip-synced music video, which will be made by the students. It's gonna be hilarious, don't worry. We film in varying parts of the school and include a section of song for each club or sports team willing to participate. It'll be a nice way to come together as a student body.
Thank you. Okay, next is the minutes of the meeting from January 17th and January 24th. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those minutes? No? Okay. Could we have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Uh, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
4-0-1. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is a day in the life of a middle school student. Good evening and welcome. We're really happy to have all of you here.
Thank you. We were asked to do a day in the life of a middle school student. Who better to present that day in the life than middle school students? So, representing our school in front of you, you have a representation of grades five, six, and seven students from our student council body. They worked with one of our teachers, Mrs. Dever, on creating this video. It was their ideas. Their first take they didn't like. They thought it was too boring. It's still pretty long, but this was our first attempt, and I'm sure we'll be doing more videos for you, so we hope you enjoy it. And then if you have any questions, you can ask the students afterwards.
Could I just ask you, before you start the video, for them to go around and say their names so that everyone knows who they are?
Absolutely. Devonte, do you want to start, honey? Uh, in the microphone, you have to, everyone has to talk in the microphone.
That's how I feel, too.
Hi, my name is Devonte.
My name is Charlotte.
My name is Lane.
My name is Kylie.
My name is Malachi.
My name is Sophia.
My name is Naveo.
My name is Charity.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Sorry.
On time, you go right to your class, you go back to your lockers, and then if you take the bus, you get dropped off at the main entrance. From there, you go to your lockers, and then into your home room. There, you can socialize with friends, eat the food breakfast provided at school, or when the program lets you, if the teacher allows it. And this is what you can do.
Every day, a Wareham Middle School student has the option of breakfast, which contains juice, milk, a fruit, and a breakfast food. Here, the students are running down the doors to the cafeteria.
Can you tell me a little bit about 5th grade at Wareham Middle School?
5th grade is different than 6th and 7th. It's kind of similar before because you have two teacher teams, and some of the two, like the teacher teams are Mr. Gabriel, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Landry, Ms. Hyman, and there's a few more. And also, bike and walk is different because you, on a day, a certain day, some teachers choose to either make up work, or you can have like extra help. And also, in bike and walk, you can have recess, which is different because it's not every day, but it's on different days. Different teachers have different days, and you get dismissed right from recess.
Can you tell me how 6th and 7th grade do bike and walk?
Well, 6th and 7th grade is different than 5th grade. We have extra enrichment classes and extra help, so it, so you can have different classes with different teachers depending on the helping.
So, in 6th and 7th grade, you don't really have to travel and lie anymore. It's more of just you go independently throughout the whole, for the sixth period throughout the day. So, for first period, I go to ELA, then second period, I go downstairs to band. Third period, I go to creative writing. Fourth period, I go to social studies. Fifth period, I go to math, and then sixth period, I go to, uh, science. And it's for sixth period, the majority of kids go to their home room, far as their class, under-day class for sixth period, so, because it's easier to return to home. But in 5th grade, it's different.
6th and 7th grade math. Right now, they're doing stations for review for tests.
Wareham Middle School offers a variety of unified arts classes. Can you tell me a little bit about art class?
In art class, when I went, we were trying to identify seven to three elements of art. And to do this, we did projects like making a butterfly that was perfectly symmetrical, making, for colors, we did, um, we made bubbles, and then we were to cross bubbles over. So, yellow bubble and rainbow made a green center when they crossed over. Where we did also some other things that didn't have to do with ten elements of art, we did something in the year which was, we made boxes, and we made backgrounds for the boxes. We also did, um, we also made napkins for Christmas, and we followed a tutorial for it, and that's really what we did.
Hey, can you tell me about music and band?
So, in music, you can either have Mr. Hart or Ms. Haggerty, and it's just like a regular music class, but band, instead of having all of your unified arts classes, we'll just have band for the whole year. For fourth period, you can choose, and there's different instruments you can choose for band. There's clarinets, flutes, saxophones, trumpets, keyboards, and percussion. And we have books for them that we use to practice, and we do some songs that some people might know, some people might not know, and we practice for our concerts.
But like, if you don't have Ms. Haggerty for band, you're gonna have her for a music class, and she does all different kinds of things, and she doesn't have, you don't have to learn an instrument. She'll do like rhythms, she'll teach you how to do rhythms, she'll probably bang on a bongo, and there's a whole bunch of games you can play with her, and she does, you know, it's fun.
Can you tell me about gym?
So, and again, that you have two teachers, one class is two teachers, but two classes do it together in the same degree. And, um, so each, we do activity for two days, so if you play the game on Monday, you play the same game Tuesday. And on Fridays, um, they call it Free Choice Friday, where you get, they give you some options, and you can play which one you'd like to play.
About music, um, what you also do is you learn a instrument like guitar.
Can you tell me about the theme class?
In theme, we learn about science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. You can do a ton of different projects, including reading, designing projects, and all of that. It's really fun, because it's more project-based learning than just breaking one to look down, listening to lectures. You learn about how it all fits into theme, and why, and projects, and who are gonna be an engineer. So, this one here is introductory theme class, where they learn about science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. So, right now, they're doing their first assignment. They're building things in the park. I'm an engineer, and he's like, trying to keep that tower from that fall.
So, what comes next is guitar. So, for the top, it was inclined, or the top of that. So, I'm guessing about where's your eye, and maybe a little dot. Just a guess. And if you guys notice on your faces, your face is actually five-eyed, right?
This is music class, and we're doing a listening activity with Ms. Haggerty.
And you are standing on a card that has a quarter note, followed by a quarter note, followed by eight notes, followed by a quarter note. You are the rest of the cheer. Next up.
So, at lunch, um, during the fourth period, 5th and 6th go to lunch, and then 6th and 7th go to lunch after them. And there's four lines, two line and hot lunch. One line is salad and wraps, and the other line is, um, burgers and chicken patties. And you get your lunch, and the down at the table is assigned to your class, and then once the teacher calls trash and trees, you throw away your trash, and then you wait for them to dismiss you back to class.
Can you tell me a little bit about the field trips in 6th grade?
Sure. Um, in 6th grade, we have, we have two field trips so far. One of them, we got to go to nature place and explore the museum. We also have, we've got to go on the way out. And the other, and the other field trip our 6th grade's gone on is Christmas Carol, and we went inside at the Zeitarian.
Can you tell me about 7th grade field trips?
The 7th grade field trip, the first one we did, we went to Five Woods, which is right next to what they do. During, at Five Woods, we actually did two different escape rooms, depending on what class you go to, a different one. And after we finished with our escape, when we eat lunch, then we go back to school. And our second field trip that we did was nature classroom. This one was, like, it was a lot, a lot longer. It was a week long, and we dorm and sleep there. And it was really fun, because we got to do a bunch of different classes, and we had to pick them, and we did different dissections, everything a very different dissection. It was really fun, but definitely did a lot of the nature things.
Can you tell me about the club field trips?
Well, so, our field trips, we have gone on a student council trip, where we went to Disney. We helped, um, we helped with a lot of things. For example, I helped on creating craft kits for kids who need to do stuff. Also, we had a drama field trip, where we went to go see Scream Musical, which was, which was given to us by Sherri Lynn.
The 7th grade students want our field trip to Five Woods. The 6th grade students want our field trip to Gillette Stadium. Here are the 6th graders at the Zeitarian seeing the Christmas Carol.
How does dismissal work at Wareham Middle School?
So, dismissal is, um, most people are already known from nature dismissal, and it comes away, and then you go to your lockers when 6th grade gets called, and then after that, you can get your stay after for help, or you can do clubs like this GSA is in council. There's also arts, um, and a whole bunch of other different ones, and yeah.
Can you tell me about after-school help?
Extra school help is usually on Thursdays. You stay after with the, um, club, where you don't, uh, to the club, you go to a class that you're getting extra help on. You get extra help in math, PNA, um, other, and, or you could like make up work that you didn't do instead of a show.
So, um, you can also stay after fresh drug on Tuesdays if your teachers don't have meetings.
Also, most clubs get dismissed at 3 o'clock on Thursdays, but we have an awesome drama club on, that means on Tuesdays, that gets dismissed at 4 o'clock for different reasons.
So, you have to meet a hint right now, we're planning.
Yeah, it's primarily behind, like, right now, okay? So, we've done it before, it's always normally in the middle, but Wareham, meanwhile, you get a pretty busy student from right, uh, from that.
The students at Wareham Middle School get the opportunity to get their energy. Have fun after school. Here, we have a pig race and a geography bee.
That's it? Do you have any questions for our students? Do they have any questions?
Did I see dodgeball in there? I thought that was like banned or something. That was great. Just curious, where was that room that you guys did the interview in?
Like, what's it? That was the library?
Right. Um, and, um, what's the middle school play this year?
The least.
And who's, who here is in it? Oh, that's great. It's gonna be awesome. All right. Great job, you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jeff?
So, I just want to, uh, quick, uh, shout. So, Devonte, are you the only 5th grader?
Sophia.
Oh, I can't even see you. I'm sorry. So, you're 5th graders, this was a new, this was a new building here, correct?
Yes.
So, tell me what it was like. Was there any difference between the two buildings?
There's a lot of differences, one being the fact that the middle school is much larger, and you go from being the oldest kid in your building, or the oldest grade being the youngest grade, so it definitely is a big transition, but within the first two weeks, you get used to it.
How do you feel, Devonte?
Same, well.
And I noticed, Malachi, am I saying that correctly? I noticed someone was wearing a Red Sox shirt in, in the film. I'm just curious, because I was, I was brought up in New Jersey. What would happen if someone wore a New York Yankees shirt?
It depends on who the person was to react.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Great job, guys.
In the video, you were working, the art class was working on a project with sneakers. Can someone tell me about that art project? Did any of you do that project?
So, we got to choose a shoe that like, we could, like, it's like, we use something like about us, like, so like, if you like sports, you can make a shoe about sports, and it's like to express ourselves. And so, I chose music and art, well, Broadway, because I'm a huge Broadway fan. Um, so like, you can transform the shoe, and then you write, um, a, like, a small paragraph or like sentence that says like, "If you were in my shoes, you could see that I'm really quick-witted," or anything like that.
Oh, that's really neat. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. It's really, it's really helpful for us to be able to see what you do all day, because I got to visit the middle school the other day, but I certainly didn't get to see all of that, so thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the families who came out tonight to bring them. Thank you.
And we had two students in that video that are sick tonight, so I just wanted to mention their names, Matthew Anzel and Priscilla Ross, so they were also helpers in making the video.
Well, that is a tough act to follow, but we will go on to the obsolete equipment list.
In your packet, you have a list from Minnit Forest of obsolete, this is music equipment, so I would ask you to please deem this obsolete, and we will do our best to get rid of it.
You also have something else on the newsletter. In the newsletter, there's another list. It's just written in.
Oh, okay, sorry. Also then, from the middle school, a floor scrubber, walk-behind shampooers, some large shelves, and with that, the music and the ones that I just read, if you could deem that obsolete.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
So, I would just like to add, we're now getting into crunch time when we need to have Minnit emptied. We have probably about another five weeks before they'll start doing walkthroughs to look for bids for demolition and abatement. We've been reaching out to different community groups, different agencies, to see if anybody would be interested in any of the pieces that we have left. If you know of anyone, I would please urge you to have them contact me so we could offer the items, and at some point, we may be opening it up to the community to walk through to see if there's anything that people would like. Short of that, we're going to be calling for dumpsters, and we would soon go to a good home, then have it placed in a dumpster, so.
Could I ask a question about that? Empty Minnit. Are there any sentimental items that will be taken to the new school?
Yes.
Not personal belongings of people, a piece of that building that's going to the new building.
Yes. One of the very first things we had Joan and the teachers do would be to identify any, anything that meant something to Minnit. We have pictures, several pictures, we have, we're going to be asking for the plaque. Once they start the demolition, we're going to be, we understand there's a time capsule, we'll be asking for that. We're in the process of trying to figure out how to move some trees, but yes, and we're going to be finding a place of honor in the new building, and when we get ready to move out of D, because we'll be doing the same thing.
Thank you.
Just, um, just want to make sure that it's remembered, is, um, I believe up on the archway, a place to grow, a Minnit place to grow, which came from, I believe, Pam Schuler.
I asked the custodian to take that down.
Okay, good, thank you.
Well, we've been doing a lot of, um, voting of obsolete items, so I wanted to make sure that we talked about other things that were saving. Okay, we'll move on to the acceptance of gifts.
I would ask that you accept $1,000 from Dick's Sporting Goods to the high school athletic department, school supplies from the Atlantic Motel of East Wareham to the middle school, pans and kitchen tools from Plymouth Country Club to the high school culinary department, $50 for the kids' food drive, and $234 for trick-or-treat for the Stage Backpack Program, as well as this past ballgame, the high school boys collected donations, and they donated it to the Stage Weekend Backpack Program, and the Cape Cod Mini 5 Grants. We went through them at the last meeting, I believe, so I would ask the committee to please accept all of these gifts.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. It's always, I always love this.
Uh, just a comment. Um, it, it's always, I always love this part, you know, this is always hats off.
I can't hear you.
Hats off. Hello? It's, it says it's on. Uh, so, so, um, I, I just hats off to everybody that donates. It's, it's, I guess it's one of, one of my favorite parts of the agenda. But particularly, I wanna point out the, the pans and kitchen tools from Plymouth Co- Plymouth Country Club to the Wareham High School Culinary Department. And, and ju- only because I've, I've toured that school with Mr. Palladino numerous times and we get to that part of the school and he's always pointing out all the stuff that's donated and it's like the, the place is like probably eighty percent donated and they're, they're making it work. I mean, I'm, I, that's a guess. That's my guess. But, uh, but they make it work with, with what they've got and it's, it's pretty good. So, that's all.
Pretty popular, too.
Yeah, very popular. Yeah, they don't have enough teachers for it.
I think it's worth mentioning, too, that Cape Cod Five, I mean, since they've come to town, they haven't been here that long. Um, they're really, really a, a valuable partner to the schools. They really step up for the schools, so thank you to them. Is there a motion to approve the gifts?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Just while we're talking about Cape Cod Five, um, they will be next month doing yet another example of Credit for Life, which is a wonderful program for high school seniors to learn about the real cost of living by yourself.
Next is the report of the assistant superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Seeland.
Good evening.
Hello.
So, thank you for, for providing us the opportunity to review our current progress at Deacon's and Minut specific to literacy acquisition. Prior to this slideshow, there are a couple of areas I would like to discuss relative to the upcoming presentation. In the last five or six years, the leadership team has been collecting and analyzing data beginning in kindergarten. We realized that there was a systems issue that was affecting our students' future opportunities. Not only were students affected, but so were all staff. Teachers have to meet students where they are and find various ways to reach and teach all. In kindergarten, it became clear that our students enter school significantly below the norm and that, if not addressed, the entire system feels the effect. If we can find the right strategies to form a strong foundation of the necessary literacy skills, we believe we can then change the entire system. The need for alternative education programs becomes less necessary and special education services become targeted and manageable. If we make data-driven decisions based on the acquisition of skills early, then students will be ready to participate at their grade level as they move on. The current practices in this presentation will address where we are in this process. We are only two years in so far. We are open to continuously learning and advancing this course of instruction as we know it is making a difference in each current grade level. Also, it appears that the skills taught are retained. So, do you like to add anything before we begin? You good?
Okay.
Alright. So, this is the same presentation that I gave last year at this approximate same time. What I'd like to do is talk about some facts about reading. You've all had this presentation, so I, I'll say it, but I assume that you've taken a look at it. But up to seventy percent of children in high poverty schools are below basic across the country. Wareham Public School kindergarten have been between fifty and sixty percent below the norm since we began FAST assessment. And that needs to be clarified because there's something magical about having data available because it's immediate feedback. We did similar assessments for a long time called DIBELS, and DIBELS is pretty much what we u- FAST is, DIBELS. But what it does is it gives us data right away, immediately, and we can analyze that data, whereas before, students used to have to fill out those, um, bubble sheets. Those bubble sheets went to a Scantron machine. The Scantron machine had to read all that data. That data had to be taken back to the school. And sometimes, because there was one Scantron machine at central office, not in the schools, people didn't have their data immediately, so there were no decisions really to be made, right? Because they didn't necessarily know by looking at the data. So, now that we have technology to this, to the degree that we have it, we are able to make decisions immediately based on that information, which is really a blessing, right? And so, that's why we can make these assessments and why we understand where we are. And we know that the problem is prevent, preventable if we begin in pre-K, K, N one and use research-based instruction. The NICHD characterizes reading difficulties as a major public health concern. More students drop out if they're not literate. They become delinquent if they're not literate. Experience unplanned pregnancies and are chronically underemployed, and this contributes to generational poverty. Poor readers at the end of grade one are significantly at risk for long-term academic difficulty. There is an eighty-eight percent probability that those grade one students will also be poor readers in grade four. Learning to read requires the use of the whole brain, so it's not an art, it's a science, for sure. And kids need to be taught, unlike language acquisition, which is something we just do. We're na- we're naturally wired to pick up on languages. Reading isn't like that. It needs to be explicitly taught. And it uses all areas of executive functioning. Good growth is not enough for students falling behind. Accelerated rates of growth are essential. This means that those students need three times more repetition. That's a lot of time for this kind of instruction, but it's true and it's three times more than what a student walking in the door at the norm would need in reading instruction. And readers depend on phonological awareness, letter sound fluency, using phonics to decode word meaning and constructing meaning. Our challenges. Time is a huge challenge in trying to weigh out our priorities as we instruct. Because there are a lot of things that we are supposed to do as teachers in this, in the classroom. And the minimum amount of time we have put into the schedule is ninety minutes of a literacy block every day for the early elementary, actually up to grade four if we can get that much time. But that time is really, it's tough to make happen in the way in which we operate in school. But on top of that, to really help students get to the catch-up growth that they need, they also need the other time that's listed. So, thirty minutes, three times a week for those below the fiftieth percentile, sixty minutes of content in writing and social studies with reading enhancement, and sixty minutes of homework, two times a week. Now, some of this we've combated with CARE. So, we, CARE has worked with the staff at CARE and helped them with some activities that they can do with students so that we can enhance those skills at that time. Um, so we're trying to take advantage of every moment that we have so that we can reach the quota. Obviously, balancing all the other elements that are necessary is challenging, having a large number of students that need support. So, in kindergarten, when it's fifty to sixty percent of your students that are below the norm, that's a significant number. The time required so that students can actually have a competitive advantage is essential. Competitive is in our vision. It's a word in our vision that's important. And how do we choose our priorities when asked to do so much? Changing current practices in literacy instruction. So, what we've currently off, offering are essentially executive functioning activities to help our students ready their brain to learn. It's not common knowledge or common in the research, not currently. There's brain research that indicates these needs are essential. There's reading research that gives you information. Everyone can identify where the problems are, but it's very difficult to find specific information that tells you what to do about that problem. And so, what we're asking people to do is outside of what they're familiar with. So, for example, if a student is having trouble with fluency and they have trouble with tracking, which is using your eyes left to right, which a lot of our students do, we're asking them to follow a ladybug on a screen for a certain amount of time, or practice lazy eights, which is using your right hand and your left hand writing lazy eights. And it's not necessarily in our, and there's a number of other activities, but it's not necessarily something that any one of us in this practice for the many years that we've been involved would integrate into literacy instruction. So, it seems a little odd. We know it's working, but it's not, it's not prevalent in many places. Now, since we started, Mashpee's come in and Fairhaven just has come in and Silver Lake. Everyone's kind of interested in what we're doing because we're seeing some results, but it's not widely spread. So, I would, there's a little hesitation sometimes in some of the practices. Flexible grouping is difficult for teachers because they're really used to having their own kids in their own classes and giving them away or giving them up to other teachers on the team so that teachers can hyper-focus on the necessary skills that the students need and only those skills, even though there are layers even within there. Um, it cuts down on the differentiation, but it creates the need to trust, really trust that your colleagues and everyone is going to jump on board and help the students that have been assigned to you, right? And we're asking them to flexibly group, so it's challenging. Understanding the data, because the data is fairly new, especially for the younger grades, because they don't have MCAS, right? So, they haven't really had to dig in. And so, understanding how it's relevant and how it relates to their instruction and the, with the specifics that they can do, they're, they're getting there and they're pretty good at it, but it's definitely a challenge. Relying on the data to make decisions to inform instruction, they need to see it working, I think, over a period of time before the, before it's a hundred percent where, wherein. And then, of course, always social emotional concerns, which I would argue that I would like to have. I, I understand completely that education can be delivered with love, but if we have students that are, um, not well, I'd rather have them be smart and not well. So, there, that's just, because to me, that's how they're going to grow and make better decisions for themselves in time. So, but we still have a number of those concerns. Our students deserve to compete with all other towns in Massachusetts regardless of income status. They deserve the opportunity to rise to the occasion and to be able to enter wherever they want with the same level of competence that districts like Weston and Wayland and Newton and Wellesley have. There's no reason why they shouldn't have the same opportunities that everyone else has. Years of exploration indicates where the problems are, as I said earlier, but not necessarily provides us the right strategy for the right student at the right time to make a difference. And that's been true in my twenty years of when I started teaching and all through my career. There, wherever I've been, there's always a group of students in the red. They're usually the most disenfranchised students. They're usually low-income or, um, special education, other areas of trauma, whatever the case may be. And I've been asking for a long time why we can't move those students. They just don't seem to get out of that red category, right? And what we've been experiencing in the last two years is that we actually have some answers that have worked and the data to back that up. And so, I'm rather relieved that we have some answers to these questions that many people have asked for a long time. Carrie Thurston, through her research and her personal experiences, she was a special education director for twenty years. She, um, has a s- has her own child with special needs. She is very, very highly engaged in this process and has researched what works and happened to have the right formula for what we needed at the time. So, she comes in, she identifies where the problems are. She helps teachers to identify where those problems are. She embeds herself in PD. She helps them with data. She creates data walls. She has them do, um, other informal assessments along with the FAST assessment, so it's not just one measure along the way. We do DRAs. We do them with, um, through FAST actually quantifies a DRA. But kindergarten, we have other people come in and do a more formal DRA when we're reporting data, for example, like tonight. But teachers will often recheck a student with DRA to see where they are, keeping, running records, identifying where the issues are. She's helping with all of that. And we know we only have a very small window of opportunity to change kids' lives. And usually, probably till the end of grade three, but to hold someone back from moving ahead, the real time is kindergarten and grade one, if we're going to hold someone back, because the damage can be too much as kids begin to grow and know where they stand, um, in this, in the social world of school. And reading is complicated and the work is definitely rigorous. So, some of our results. We'll start with pre-K. Entering K, we do some assessments of them and Bethany and Joanne Gibbs, right? Um, took a look at our assessment data that we give to pre-K entering K students and delineated them based on their experiences. So, full-time preschool, part-time preschool, or no preschool at all. And we took those students and they put together these charts of where students are in that equation with uppercase letter identification and lowercase letter identification. So, it's interesting. And I followed up with some charts just specifically. They had created these. I thought they were, they helped to identify the different groups. The bar chart is certainly compelling. When we see the difference between a full-time pre-K experience and the others. Any questions? Do you wanna wait till the end? Or do you want?
It's easier if we do it.
It's up to you.
I think it might be easier as we go because I know there's a.
There's a lot of information.
So, if you don't mind, then that would be.
I do not mind.
So, is, is our preschool or is it surrounding areas?
So, I got this data from a survey that we take in our packet at the beginning of the year. If it's full-time, if it's a full-time, and that's from our kinder- our preschool right there. So, we have a survey that we give out at the beginning of the year.
So, say, uh, just to clarify, so it is our preschool?
Correct.
Alright, so my next question is, and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, this is very possible. Um, so it's saying that full-time preschool, you have eight point seven percent of those students who are low average in the lowercase letter ID, is that correct?
I'm just looking at it. So, high average is forty-one, low average is, yep, eight point seven five.
And then your hard-time preschool, you have six point eight percent. So, the, the, um, full-time is actually not doing as well.
But we have forty-one percent in the high average.
You're saying that, too? Okay.
So, I'm looking at the blue and the green.
Okay. Yep. And have you, um, also distinguished which, you know, how many are special ed and how many?
No, really, to be honest with you, Mary, what I did this year, I took that survey because I was very curious about it. I took it, um, and I entered all of the information and Ms. Ansel, the secretary, and I were able to take it from the Excel from Power School. And then we put it with FAST data and I merged it together. So, it was an experiment for me this year. It's the first time I did it. So, um, as you ask these questions, I can delineate more. So as you ask these questions, I can delineate more on the survey, which is cool. But for me, it was just very fascinating because I wanted to see a correlation between students that have been in school, preschoolers, and what their results were on the FAST, the beginning of kindergarten.
And I'd be interested, too, in knowing students who actually attended, you know, in local preschools.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that we'll just have to put some more codes in that survey. I just, it was just something that occurred to me when I was looking at the surveys and going through all of it to say, oh, I want to check out this, I need this data. So it was the first year I did it, so I'm going to, now that I've seen it, I literally put it together. But it was fascinating to look, I had a different bar graph, too, to see the results of what children who have been exposed to preschool and have not. It was profound, profound.
Just a clarification, just because, only because I was involved in it years ago. But the devils, you did get instant feedback, and it was the grade testing that was put into test words. And I was the person putting it, by the way, the back four, my neighbor.
When I arrived, there were, when I arrived, there were boxes and boxes of bubble sheets.
Right, that's great, that would've been great.
Okay, sorry. Grade and G-made, yep.
Because I just remember doing it, that's all.
Anyone else?
I do. So 32 kids for no preschool, so going into kindergarten without any kind of anything previous. Is that a big number or is that a normal number for us? So like last year, the year I don't remember?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, Laurie, to see if that's normal.
Is there like a, besides you just guessing, is there a reason why this amount of kids would have no preschool or anything?
We have a lot of move-ins, to be honest with you, too. So the data, it comes from everywhere, but it's not uncommon that children come to us with no schooling.
And kindergarten is five?
Correct.
Well, so you've said, though, this is just our preschool for right now. I understand why, but so they, those 32 could, that could be lower.
Right. And there's our daycare, too. Not our daycare, but daycares within the town. But we are doing a lot of outreach, I mean, with Dr. Shaver Hood and Dr. Schwab and Anne Marie Fillion, we've been reaching out to the daycares and preschools, and we have quite a relationship with them. As a matter of fact, just last week, the OT Carol Welborn did quite a presentation with some of the daycares and preschools out in Onset. So we are, we're really reaching out and creating those relationships there as well.
I didn't mean that as criticism. I was just pointing out that that number could be lower. There could be, maybe of those 32, maybe half of them went to different preschools.
Yeah. It's my 100%.
That the number is just not there.
Right, so basically, you know, exposure to no exposure is huge, right? Students that come in with exposure are already coming in with a ticket for success. Students with no exposure, we have to make up those gains already, too, you know?
So the exposure versus non-exposure, that's what I really want to get at. If we can go back to the first slide with the facts. So in fact, number one, up to 70% of children in high-poverty schools are below basic, right? Now, are we talking about kids, are these kids cognitively fine, but they just haven't been exposed to the material? Or is it a mix with, you know, dyslexia and, you know, the tracking issues and all that stuff? Now, of, so of the kids that are maybe would otherwise cognitively be fine, but haven't been exposed to the material, do they do well?
Well, our kids are.
They are? Okay, go ahead.
Comparatively, and so I would argue that those other, we begin believing that all students can attain these skills if we integrate the right strategies for them. Because either we're going to build their brain to a point where they're ready, right? Where the right side is connected to the left, and that they, their core is strong, and that their tracking becomes stronger, and all those other elements that seem to get in the way of success of reading, for example. We build those up, and things change for them. So the special needs diagnosis or the other possible diagnoses are no longer in question, where they would be otherwise, because we didn't always know what to do.
Well, right, and I was reminded of when Mr. Swett was interviewing, like, the last meeting, and he was giving examples of how some of these kids show up, and they don't even know how to orient a book because they don't know which way they'll live.
Correct.
And it's not because they have like a visual, you know, blindness or anything, they just don't know that a B is upright or something, you know? Just, yeah, just sad. So, all right. Go to fact number five. So it says, "Students need three times more repetition than average readers to achieve." Are we doing that, are they getting the three times?
No, I would say we're giving, we're doing the minimum of the requirement. So 90 minutes would be every day of literacy instruction is the minimum requirement. And we try to fill in that gap by enlisting the care program, doing things in the hallways, having kids practice their letters at lunch. Doing, we're trying to make up that time in other areas.
And all of my teachers give the parents Lexia. Please, parents, listen to get the Lexia, so you can go on Lexia. Students can practice, they know how to use it if you have a computer at home. And their fri words.
They can do it on their cellphone, too.
Right, and their fri words, so I have a copy, I have copies, and I'm going to send them home in the next newsletter, too. So just practicing those fri, those sight words all the time will help our students just be fluent readers. It's just like automaticity in mathematics. If you know your number facts, and if you know your sight words, you're going to have those skills, the skill sets you need, but you've got to practice.
So this is, have we known this for a while, that these kids need three times?
Yes, but we haven't necessarily known what to do specifically. We've tried a myriad of different programs through many years in education. We're trying to find solutions to the problem. And we think we've touched upon something, what we're doing currently, that has the potential to make a significant difference in our kids' lives. Now, we're two years in, and, you know, it's trying because it's changing so much of what we do, but we know that it's making a difference. So what, what I think is important to note is that all, the pieces of all of the programs and all of the things that we've done that have been researched properly, you know, in journals, peer-reviewed, those kind of research articles, those are also integrated into our practices. What's different is the speech and language skills, the occupational therapy skills, and the physical therapy skills that have often been given in complete isolation are now being integrated into the literacy blocks. And that's what's really making the significant difference.
And can we go to challenge number one? Now, if I heard you right, we're doing the 90 minutes.
Correct.
And we're sort of winging it or piecemealing it with everything else, but we really need to be doing everything else, right?
Yes, it would be great to get the 90 minutes.
Oh, we're not even doing the 90s?
We are, but we're working on it hard. It's not, that isn't even easy in the structures.
So ideally, we'd like, you know, we'd want the whole boat here, right?
Yeah, all hands on deck with this, really, that's what we need.
My teachers know, though, that literacy comes number one. Everybody knows that at Deacon School, so they know that it's 90 minutes plus.
No, this, this isn't a criticism.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, you're telling us what we need to do, and we need to help you do it, but we just, we just, you know, we approve the budget. Now, is the budget we approved going to get anywhere near that?
It's going to help.
Well, what, you need to tell us what we need to get there. If that's the key, if that's the key to the puzzle, then that's what we need to do.
Well, we're working on different elements because it doesn't necessarily have to happen in a literacy block all of the time. And I do think that extra hands would be phenomenal, and I believe that we're working on ways to make that happen with the current budget.
And I should have directed that to the superintendent, I'm sorry, but just that we, if this is it, then this is what we need to do.
You're right.
So, but, but we already passed a budget, and I wish this was more part of it.
Well, you're right, but we're going to, I'm going to be coming back to you asking for a little bit of adjustments to be made in how we meet the needs of our youngest.
It sounds like this needs to be a priority.
It certainly, it absolutely, without question. If kids can't read, then they can't access anything. And we're lucky in that we have something that's different that we're offering, and it seems like it's pretty exciting. And I don't want to get too, you know, I don't want to get too excited about it, but the results have been quite outstanding in the past. If we practice the way that it's laid out, it's making a difference.
It's not, I mean, it sounds like a lot of common sense, just quantified. It's just extra help, extra help, extra help, and we need to do it.
It's also the way that teachers choose to practice, and it's changing some of their practices, which is not, it's challenging. It's definitely a challenge, understandably.
Thank you for, I know it was a year ago, I remember the presentation a year ago. This, because I studied it intentionally before I got here tonight, this is even more provocative and powerful than what I asked for. But I have to ask you to go back to slide one again. When you assert facts, that's, that's powerful. The 50 to 60% that you have uncovered in Graham Public Schools, does that make sense, given the amount of poverty that we have? In other words, some schools are at 70%, some schools are at 40%, we're apparently at 50 to 60%? Based upon our demographics, is that where you'd expect us to be? This National Institute of Child Health and Human Development, are they asserting causation as it pertains to dropout, delinquency, pregnancy, unemployment?
They are. Also in prison, most, most that they've, most that they've looked at now. I think grade four is about the level of reading for a certain percentage of people who are incarcerated.
Is this private or governmental, this institute?
Private, but it's run by people who were previously in government.
Okay, but they have lots of money to do the studies necessary to prove causation because?
They're also not the only ones saying it.
I understand, I understand. Fact number three. Do we have any sense, and I'm directing at all three of you, do we have any sense whether this 88% probability is relevant primarily to curriculum and instruction? Or are there exogenous external, you know, factors that are contributing to this? Because 88% is, is a pretty extraordinary number, especially if I was an educator and had a first-grade teacher, and I was a first-grade teacher.
So, one of the things that we also need help with is the practice piece. So we do a lot of reading with students in school. We need that practice to carry on at home. We have lots of books at school, we have book carts, we try to do book swaps. If families don't have books at home, we're more than willing to send books home so students can practice.
Do you have enough parental contact to make an impact? Are you having an impact with parents, do you think?
Not to the degree that I would like, as far as the literacy. I think kids need to put the video games away and take out the books again. We, we've made a shift, you know, in recent years where there's more game time happening, and we need to get back to some literacy routes with the practice.
Earlier, it pretty much admitted that everything below the 90 minutes was delegated to parents, right?
No, the 90 minutes is on us, as far as the instruction.
Everything app.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You've essentially delegated to parents. And so, I'm with Mr. Flaherty. I mean, that's just, you know, that's crossing your fingers, you know? And we shouldn't be in the business of crossing our fingers. I don't want to get back into the issue of retention because that was a very interesting, but prior meeting, but it is obviously related. If we go to fact four, five, and six, please.
Can I answer your question, actually?
Absolutely.
Do you remember what it was? I do, I was just wondering if you remembered because you went all the way to the place. It, I, I believe, I mean, I live in school, right? This is my world and my life, but I believe that curriculum instruction has a direct impact on that 88%, because I've seen it.
So, but as a contributing factor, do you think it's 90% of the problem?
No, I would say that it's.
90% of the solution, to be more positive?
Well, I would like to believe that it's 90% of the solution practiced in the way that we've been practicing.
Well, that gives me, that gives me some optimism.
Yes. Which is why I come to work every day, right? So I believe that we have some answers that we haven't had previously that are rather exciting, and if we could just do it for an extended period of time, people would begin to realize the power of what it is that we're doing.
In the old days, which being old, I can say, they used to say that the education of the mother literally is the determining factor in the success of the student. You seem to be saying that now with better knowledge of how to go about literacy, you can overcome that predetermination almost, and it doesn't matter who the parent is, you can still teach them to read.
Correct, because if we don't, then we will not fix the systemic problem of generational poverty.
I'm taking a lot of time, but thank you. You assert that learning to read, fact number four. You assert, or they, excuse me, Fielding, Roger, and Kerr assert, I guess, that learning to read is a science. But if it's such a science, why is there so much debate about how to do it?
Well, the reading wars started in the 50s with smart people writing articles about.
I was in grade school then, so I know what you're talking about.
Whole, yes, whole language or whole word reading versus phonemic awareness reading. And there were these huge debates between intelligent people about how we should go about teaching reading, which infiltrated the school systems because we wanted to do what was best for students at the time. And whole language or whole word reading was the preferred method until a Harvard professor later did some studies and went back and said that really we need students to be able to identify and have phonemic awareness as a skill in order to get to the word to then read. So there has been this reading war, really, for a very long time, for a very long time. Well, Wareham has chosen to implement every possible thing that could work. So no, I don't think, well, possibly, maybe philosophically, there's a little bit of fight in it, and I can understand why, because there's been success and failures on both ends. I think the key is that there is not necessarily a one answer for every single student, and we need to take the best of what we've learned and use it.
So, Mr. Swett, you are in the medical industry, it's just like that. It's like doctors trying to prescribe the best medicines for people in cure, trying to cure, but each doctor sometimes have different methodologies and prescribe different medicines. And so that's what we're working on right now, is trying to find the best medicine.
Unfortunately, that is not the case in medicine today. There are best practices.
Yep.
And if you don't use them, you get sued.
Right.
The refinement, by the way, the 1950s medicine was just like education is today. is today.
Mm-hmm.
So, but it's improved a lot, but we don't need to go there tonight.
But I still think we're looking for and researching the best practices.
By the way, this is all by way of saying I'm incredibly sympathetic to, to what you're going through, given the fact that you're still fighting a war 70 years later. I think this was the three times we've already talked about, and we've already talked about this war, because, no, more science. So, let's skip over facts five and six, because I don't want to spend forever, and go on to challenge three. We do a lot of professional education.
Correct, correct.
So, why are literacy instructions, practices unfamiliar?
It's the mo, it's the other elements that we are connecting to the acquisition of reading that are unfamiliar. It's not the literacy instruction. The instructional practices are familiar to everyone. They'll often say, oh, we used to do that, or yes, we did that, or we have that, or we did that back then. The, the thing that's unfamiliar is connecting that the physical piece into the integration of the literacy, so, so there's this sort of funny feel.
I get it. So, the literacy, the literacy instruction is well-known.
Correct.
But integrating the neurological aspects of it is very.
You said it much better, yes.
I get it, thank you. I was gonna connect medicine to education, I don't think we need to do that.
Sorry.
Excuse me?
We already did.
We already did, exactly.
Tried.
Go to the last slide that we stopped on. None of that surprised me. I, I remember two or three years ago wanting to see this, these data, so I am grateful that you've done it. Doesn't surprise me, except I'm really curious, and I guess I should ask Mrs. Chandler about the seven and a half percent. So, you've got seven and a half percent of the cohort who've had no preschool, and they're still scoring high average. What are the demographics of those kids?
I'd have to research that. I, I could find out.
I mean, that would be, it would be really fascinating to know. For example, it would be really fascinating to know if they were high-poverty kids.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
That would sort of put a lie to the fact.
Yes, it would.
High poverty doesn't mean you're necessarily going to produce poor test results. So, I, I would love to know more, and I know this is new to you, you're just, just doing it and doing your own.
I'm just, yeah, diving into this.
You're just doing your own data input. But that seven and a half percent is, is a really interesting cohort, that it would be really interesting to know more about.
Can I just add to that? It's very possible that maybe that seven and a half percent are from the surrounding preschools, right?
Oh, we don't? Well, that's a great point.
I could, yeah, I'll look into that.
You don't know that?
We don't.
Ah.
But we will.
In which case, this data needs to be, so we're still fine. But that's a great point, Mary.
I thought, I thought it was mentioned early on that these were just Wareham pre-K kids.
The 90 full-time, the 90 full-time are.
Oh.
And the, are the part-time?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and part-time.
Part-time.
I'd still love the fact that you're collecting the data, let's just keep refining it.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah. Great point.
So, yes, I agree, I mean, that's, we wanted to see this data. I don't have any questions that haven't already been answered, but I do just want to say something that Mrs. Simmons just said about, you know, home and video games, and, and maybe, you know, the stress on literacy has, has lessened, and, and that's a really important fact, and it's something that's completely out of your control. So, that's, that's important, I need to point out.
But Dr. Schwarm said 90 percent of the data, they're in control.
Well, maybe that's part of it.
Even though it's in illusion control, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Okay, so, this is our kindergarten DRA. This is done mostly by, not by the teachers, I just want to make that clear. So, the teachers of the students themselves do not perform the DRAs for kindergarten. We have other people come in to perform the DRA as a way to eliminate as much bias as we possibly can when we're reporting on the data. Thirty-four students came into K as average and above, and 95 students are currently Move on.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Just wondering if you know, and, again, I'm getting, digging deep, but deeper, if she's saying really deeper, do you know, do you know, out of that number, where the 11 that you retained fall?
I don't, I didn't bring it with me, Mary, but I do now, and I've been tracking those students, and I will tell you that out of the 11 I retained, I believe four or five of them are at a DRA 12 or more. But I'll, I can send that to you, I had it last, I had it last meeting.
I'm most concerned with, these students are now in your control, you've got them, you're working with them, and yet, six of them fell from below to way below, even as they were receiving instruction. How can we get comfortable with that fact?
Well, I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not, that's just a fact.
Okay, so how do you explain it?
Um, you know, I, I don't know if I can explain it, Jeff, other than sometimes kids have bad days, there's different testers. I don't know, I'd have to look at the tests themselves, but because those are six, we do, and we'll look deeply at that, because I care very much that I have students going backwards, that's not anybody's job. Our job is to move it forward.
The expectations change as well.
Do rise.
The DRAs do change up.
I understand.
So, there's a certain segment, so if, so, for example, those six maybe went from a negative A to an A.
But it wasn't enough growth.
So, for example, they might be part of the 105, and we consider a negative A when they walk through the door, as they're able to read some, or they, they can identify something, so we, we put a letter on them. The next level of expectation is a one or a two, and they're not there. They might have risen to an A, but they didn't get to the one, and so, the, so they're still under where they should be, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they've gone backwards.
This doesn't show growth.
It's just not enough growth.
I understand completely, because this is not growth, this is achievement.
Correct.
And, and therefore, because the test is, expects more.
Yes.
They could have stayed the same and fallen as a category.
Correct.
Still, given the fact, as you point out, they have to grow rapidly.
Correct.
In order to become competitive, to use the mission word, it's a, it's, it's, it's not a great result. Thank you.
Is it appropriate to compare this chart to last year?
It's one of, it's one of the last slides.
Okay.
But it is a different cohort of students, but it's.
Right, so that's why I asked, is it even?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay.
But we would argue at the table probably about that.
Okay.
And that's fair, either way.
Right, okay.
This is growth. So, essentially, what Wareham students, what we need to see for Wareham students is that blue bar has to be the largest bar seen on these, on these growth charts in order to be exceeding.
You started this in February of 2016, right?
Correct.
So, we're now three years.
Two. We just finished our second year in Feb, right now.
Well, 16 to 19, I was just.
No, it was 17, February of 17, so it was 16.
Thought I saw it on a slide, 16.
16, 17 was the school year. So, we started in February of 2017.
But these, these kindergartners are not the first group of kindergartners you've worked with, right?
They are the third.
They're the third. So, what concerns me is that you've got this wonderful neurological component to your instruction, and you still have 30 percent of the kids that are, that, forget achievement, because this doesn't measure achievement, that are growing at, at a very low rate. How does that make sense after three years of working with this new way of teaching?
So, I mean, this is 60 days.
Yeah, eight weeks.
It's, this is a, you know, this is 60 days. So, we're looking at a December test that was given, so I'm, I'm gonna hold my, when we see this in June, because we will see a year's growth. This is our mid-year mark, this is a formative assessment for teachers.
Not even mid-year, really.
Not even mid-year. And so, we've got to put these practices into place, these kids have got to practice, 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 so they haven't had enough practice yet. But I am pretty confident that we will see extreme growth in June, because this is, like I said, 60 days, including kindergartners who didn't even, you know, couldn't even tell them, tell them their name when they walked through the door. So, I do believe we will see the growth we need. I'm confident.
Just for the record, the percentages still don't make any sense to me, as you know.
Mm-hmm.
And, and my printout doesn't have the legend on the bottom, I was really trying to make this out. This is weird. I should have asked.
The legend.
Yeah, did you get the latest one from this morning, or is that before this morning?
Before.
Yeah, that's before this morning. I had a couple of things that I corrected, so I apologize.
I should have called and asked.
That's okay, I apologize. Grade one, you ready? Ninety students entered grade one, average or above, we are currently have 119 students at average and above. Again, the expectations are greater.
So, so, oh, it's, so Jeff took my question from before with the six, I was like, my god, really? But this is, this is like a reverse bell curve going on here, I mean, it is, we get this incredible growth with the, with the way above, which is awesome.
Right.
But also, we're growing in the way below. And does, does anyone have an answer for that?
Well, you just stole my question.
Oh.
No, that's, that's okay.
I think that's an issue. I mean, I don't necessarily have an answer for it. I do know I ask my teachers a lot of questions, and I think that, you know, they have some answers.
What are they?
Well, I have them right here. So, I asked about, I asked them, what are your, you know, what are the needs, what are our solutions, and a lot of my teachers felt like they, they could use more support in the classroom, was one. More leveled readers, they're having a hard time, my, some of my students in grade one, specifically with reversals. So, they asked Carrie Thurston about reversals, and Carrie just sent out new physical movements, including the army crawl, which I've seen in the military, to help students. So, I'm getting the feedback now, because that's what this is, is a formative assessment. You're looking at this, you're saying, okay, we need to make adjustments.
What are we gonna do?
I'm get, I got the adjustments, so now, I'm very happy to announce, too, that I asked the teachers, what are our needs then, what's going on here? We formulated a new group with Ms. Wolf for my P1s, those are my upper kids, so that we could free up another teacher. We've added two halftime paraprofessionals, thanks to Dr. Shaver Hood, and we have solicited the PTA for leveled readers, in which the PTA was fortunate to give us thousands of dollars. There's a start.
So, to pick up on Mr. Flaherty's question.
Mm-hmm.
You've got kids going in the opposite direction.
Right, much higher, too, I know. That's interesting, yeah.
I agree. Some are doing fabulously well, they've obviously, you know, jumped, in some cases, two gray, two, two levels, or whatever they are.
Right.
And some are going in the opposite direction. Have you been able to figure out whether the kids going up are with, I don't want names, obviously, whether some teachers are that much more successful and others are that much less successful? Is that a factor in what's, in what's happening?
So, teacher performance?
They're in groups.
Yeah, but this is.
They're in groups, yeah. So, they're all in, they're in groups, so they're in P1, P2, P3, P4, P5, they're not with their homeroom, so they're in with that instructor.
Understood. These are homogeneous groups, not heterogeneous.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. So, I have, we have to pull the homogeneous groups to look at all of that, but I, I do think that each of our teachers are trying their best to come up with different methodologies to reach students. I do think sometimes with some of these kids, it just clicks, and I've seen it click within a week. It just, all of the sudden, the development has gone from here, and they've shot up. They just, and teachers tell me all the time, they just got it, you know?
Is teacher buy-in?
I think we have very good teacher buy-in.
That's not an issue.
Nope. I think teacher trust is still, you know, when you give up your kids that you own, that people talk, I mean, we're talking about, you know, performance right now, so my teachers care about their performance as well. So, but when you give up your child to another teacher, there's a lot of trust there, especially if it's 90 minutes, right? And then you have to speak to that. So, we're working on that, I think that.
I understand, but with a cohort of 165, 85, 100, average of 175 kids, you know, and you've got kids going in the opposite direction, you've got a large enough cohort, you could probably draw some conclusions about why it's happening. And I know it's maybe premature, and I'm not asking you to do it tonight, but I think there's an extraordinary opportunity to try and better understand.
Yep.
What's, what's really happening.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
So, the groups that you have, I take it that there must be a group that is your struggling readers, right?
Correct.
So, how large do you think that group is?
I can tell you right now, in my Priority One students, that's my red group, last year, my pri, in fall, there were 38, now there's six in the Priority One, but my Priority One and my Priority Two, we do have a few oranges that go, because I have six in the red. So, out of, there's 28 there, so I do move some of there. Grade one, I have 41, so we've got two groups of Priority One. And in grade two, I've got 31, so I've got two groups there.
So, just for clarification, so that means with those two groups, I think it was grade one, we have 41?
Grade one, I'm at 41.
So, you then have a group of 20 that a teacher has taken?
Yep, with a para.
And you know that the research says in order to make progress, that it should be a group of three or less?
I've read that research, I have read that, Mary.
But they're broken up into smaller.
They are broken into centers, there are centers within.
And there are, there's help in there at the time. So, the para, that group, specifically all of the help, is focused in the Priority One and Priority Two groups, and there's no help with the others. See what I'm saying? So, we balance it out.
Right.
With the flexible grouping in that way with what we have.
I just also would be interested in seeing the data on the ones that are in that group, how many of them are able to get out of that group?
Yes, I, we have that data, too. We do do those data meetings, and we drag our students over to the different groups. Sometimes, you know, we want everybody in the blue, so, but that's what we do, yep.
Thank you.
This is what we like growth to look.
When I say drag, I mean on the computer screen.
Thanks for clarifying that.
I appreciate it.
This is a better representation of what we'd like to see, in, in the blue category, but I would still really like that to say 87 percent.
But, you know, I have to say, interestingly enough with this, I'm looking at this, and I look at this, and I have, my concern about grade one, because I've got 41 students in Priority One, although it looks like, you know, we're making huge growth, but I still look at who's in red, orange, yellow, green, and blue. Not that, those colors, but my priorities, my, you know.
I saw a pattern for all, four or whatever, that orange was always slightly taller than, or, excuse me, red was always slightly taller than orange. or excuse me, red was always slightly taller than orange. But once I got the legend, I realized, that's because red is 20 points and, and orange is only 10. So, they've almost made the, the size of the, of the bars totally misleading. And it's another reason for, I wish they would give you a rationale, because it's just looking at this, if you didn't look at the legend, you'd say, oh, why is that always the case? And now you realize why it's always the case.
That's right.
It's just mathematically troublesome, or statistically, or whatever.
Grade two. 95 students entered grade two, average or above. There are now 109 students, average and above. It's interesting to look at and ask questions about it.
This was also our first group in kindergarten.
Correct.
Like...
So, so I could understand in the previous slide why the blue had gone up so much. But how come, if you go to the next slide, why didn't the blue, it looks like the blue should go up quite a bit here, too?
We're in grade two?
Yeah. Go to the next slide.
Oh, you mean in the growth?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's different with the kids who come in, they're measuring growth based on percentile, right? So, if you, where you are on the percentile, and then they take that number, and they multiply it by another number, and it creates growth. So, it's two different measures, basically. So, you're seeing, when you see that there's growth, you know that teachers are doing their job, right? Because they're moving kids from one place to another place. But proficiency is, it's different.
Yeah, got you.
You're measuring something different.
I have to point out, here's another example of divergence, which is, you've got kids going in the wrong direction, and kids going in the right direction. So, here's two graphs in a row, DRA data, that says something's happening. And please find out what's happening, because it's a very troublesome when you see it in two different cohorts.
I s, I don't see it that way.
Sure.
I see they were 28 in the red down to 19, 21 in the orange down to 18. I see 48 and 46 in the green and blue.
90? 49. I apologize. You're 100% right. Thank you.
It's, it's 88 to...
You're 100% right. I misjudged.
94.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem. We also chose to collect some other data that we've been carefully watching, special education referrals and discipline referrals over the last two years. So, we started collecting this data last year, and now collecting it this year to see if possibly we are making any gains in the neurological work that we're doing with kids early on to avoid the need for special education evaluation. We're essentially trying to disrupt the special education process with what we're doing.
Have you checked with Melissa to see if that's okay?
Yes, I think she's aware. Because really, in essence, what, what's happened in the past, or what I could say from experience is, we see something's wrong with a student. We try at something. We, we try it for a couple of weeks, it's not working. We retest, we realize it isn't working, we reassess. We then do something else. At that same time, that 180 days is getting less and less, as we're trying to figure out what's the problem. We still can't figure it out, because we're, we're not really sure, and so we then do a referral for special education. That student's tested, and they may have something wrong with their working memory, or their processing speed, or, you know, a number of other issues that, that may qualify them for special education service. But then they're taken from the general education to be, to get special education services outside of the general education, so they're no longer in this general education population to get those services. They're quote-unquote a developmental delay without any specificity, because they're young, and they don't, we don't necessarily know exactly what's amiss, right? What might be not working. And so, we don't really know what to do even then. It doesn't really solve the problem, right? So, what we're trying to do is solve the problem before it becomes a real problem when they're little. And if we do that now, and we strengthen their processing speed, or their working memory, or their tracking, or those other issues that seem to get in the way of their ability to read, then we have solved the problem and no longer need special education services. Now, wheream, our percentages are outrageous. 27 percent of our student population is on a special education plan. It is insane. I think the state's average is 18 percent, or 17 percent, something like that. It's, it's absolutely nuts. And I think we can somehow, if we, if, if we practice this over a period of time, we will be able to, if there's still a problem, we will know exactly, or more accurately, what that problem will be as we are practicing this, and be able to target it much more clearly, so that we can give students what they need. But the way the system works now, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. It becomes very complicated. And the older kids get, and the more, right? It just compounds. So, we'll see. This is, this is in progress. We're collecting the data, we're going to see how it goes. We'll see if we make a difference. But I know every assessment that we do on a student costs approximately $1,200 to $1,500 every time we assess. So, and I'm not against providing students with exactly what they need, if it's working. So, we'll see.
The 25 for the 2018-19, the special education referrals, is that just in, like, teacher referrals, not parent?
Well, we have that, I have that on a slide actually delineated, and I don't remember exactly how many, but I can get that information for you. Sarah Russo, DECAUS actually delineated that very nicely on a slide, and I just gave you the number.
If you were to check, to report those numbers in percentages, would the differences be about the same?
Can you ask that question again?
So, instead of in numbers, if you reported them in percentages? Because depending on...
Oh, you mean with the number of students we had?
Right, right.
Well, Sarah said it was, Sarah indicated it was a 34 percent decrease from last year in special education referrals.
Okay. Okay.
Mike has a question. So, obviously, 2017, 2018, that's a full year, but is this, is this...
No, it's, it's the same timeframe.
The same, at the same time?
Yeah, what we did was, we took the data and we split it pretty, in half, so we kind of gave a roundabout. We just said, rather than take the whole number for the whole year, we really wanted to compare from where we are now, and I'm reporting it today, so we used the same timeframe.
Good.
When you look at those numbers, how many of the 25 qualified?
We have that too. We just have to get it to you, but we have that. It's on my desk, but...
Yeah. I'll just have it in there.
The discipline referral is a judgment, correct?
Yes. It has nothing to do with safety of the school either. It's an information for us to gather.
My question is, I love the fact that it went from 307 to 225. I think I love the fact. Like, my question is, was there any guidance given to the staff with respect to what, what is appropriate for a referral? In other words, are there more or less lenient this year than last year?
Yeah, so we have, that's a good question, Jeff, because I do, I have changed the referrals a couple of times along with the behaviorist and the administration team, because we put definitions on the back. You know, we talk with our PBIS people, and we have definitions now on the back, because it is a judgment, and a minor altercation, major altercation, there's a lot of perception there to be made. But, so, we have put that in there, and we have had lots of conversations with staff about reporting, and the importance of reporting, and then making sure reporting accurately and objectively.
So, you feel comfortable that this is apples to apples?
I do. Yep. And I, when I look at discipline referrals, it doesn't, it, it only tells me that we're just reporting, I think, quite a bit, and I think that's a good thing. I think it's good that I know what's going on in the classroom. It's good to get reports. It doesn't measure the safety of a school, though.
But it doesn't measure the educational environment of the classroom?
No.
I disagree, but...
No, I don't think it does.
You're disagreeing with Mrs. Chandler?
Well, yeah, we do frequent, I mean, we definitely have our opinions.
I have Swiss...
I want to, I want to just make sure I understood.
Yeah, no, I have Swiss data, so we have a system now through PBIS. It's a great system that the behaviorist enters all of our discipline referrals into, and it tells me who reported, the time it was reported, where it was reported, so I can make decisions with the data. And when I look at, if I look at a discipline problem, I look at that if those are 220, 225 different discipline referrals on different kids. That's a problem for me in school. But if that is a few students with a lot of discipline referrals, that tells me I have a student problem, not a school problem. Does that make sense? Yeah.
It does, it does make perfect sense.
So, I analyze that data often.
I think, I think we were answering two separate questions. So, and, and that's true, what Mrs. Chandler indicated. What I'm arguing is that the quality of instruction...
Yes.
And the rigor of that instruction, and how that's delivered, has an impact on the amount of discipline referrals that we receive.
I like both your answers. Thank you.
And I'd be happy to show you the Swiss data, too. It's excellent. Good stuff.
Grade three, we switch to the Fanta-Sempinelle for grades three and four. And there's a reason that I chose to do this. Last year, I analyzed both. I analyzed both DRA and FNP this year. And what was interesting is that in grade three, it's the exact same for both measures, right? And it's analyzed through the FAST information system. So, FAST quantifies all the data, and then you get to choose what measure you'd like them to report out on. And with third grade, it was exactly the same, but with fourth grade, it was completely different. And mine, it uses the Fanta-Sempinelle quite often when they're analyzing their students, as is the middle school more often than the DRA. DECAUS is very familiar with the DRA. So, because of that, we've, I chose to show you the Fanta-Sempinelle information.
Okay. So, I had a pretty simple reaction to this graph, and that was, that it's not a particularly dynamic graph. And that, in a sense, concerned me, and I just want to make sure my conclusion is correct, which is, we're not talking grade three. And the further along I get in grade, the more difficult it is to create movement, growth, et cetera, and achievement. Is that a fair conclusion to draw?
Yes.
That's what I was afraid, I was hoping I wasn't correct, but, okay. Thank you.
However, the work that we're doing, even though it's later, the work that we're doing is making a difference in our students' overall progress compared to, to when we weren't doing the work. So, for example, we've actually have so many students in the, in the beginning of the year, we had so many students in the green and the blue categories when we began, that we had never had before. So, we've literally kind of reversed what we've had in the past, where we used to have these large groups of red and orange to have to figure out what, how do we help them. Now, we have a smaller group, which is how it should be, right? In those two areas, where we can really focus in, we have a larger number of kids in the blue and green, which is exciting overall, because we see that there's progress being made, and that's a good thing.
And this doesn't show the growth that we are seeing, like we said earlier, but these, the green and the blues are exciting to us, because it's progress we haven't seen in the past, which is all part of the pre-cated two movement coming up.
Yeah, I mean, you have 92 out of 150 that are doing quite well.
Mm-hmm.
Above average or well above.
Mm-hmm.
That's a nice number.
Absolutely.
Obviously, you'd like to have fewer reds and, and oranges, but still, there are a lot of kids doing very well.
And when we looked at this data, and we met with our teachers and our data teams, we looked at the groups that they're in, and we've changed some groupings. So, some students, we were able to move up a group. Some students may have only had like a three-point difference, but it, because of the norms, we had to move them down a group to get some extra support for them. So, that's what we did in January, so that we had some groups that just changed to try to help that.
You're talking about groups a lot, I think...
Literacy groups.
Yeah, but I think you already referred to this. How dynamic are these groups? Do kids move between groups a lot?
They do. Not only do we do the FAST testing three times a year, we do progress monitoring on the students. And what we did with the teachers, when we looked at this particular FAST assessment, we used to have our special ed teachers that would do progress monitoring. We trained the classroom teachers in how to do it themselves, so they now go into FAST. It's a, like, fluency, it's a quick minute or so that they're reading, and the, the teachers are doing it. They get their feedback right away. So, they, they were really excited to be able to take this on themselves, so we trained them in what they had to do.
In the 1950s, we had something called tracking. I assume that this is...
Can we not say that word?
We never, ever used that term, because tracking was not...
This is skill-based.
Was not dynamic. Well, that's the most important thing.
Right.
You were, once you're on a track, you're...
You were staying there.
And this is, and this is not true in this case.
No, because we, like I said, we just met two weeks ago, and we just changed our groups.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So, in third grade, so there was data on these students at the end of second grade.
That's that September data.
That's not at the beginning of third grade?
That, well, it is at the beginning, but we also had it transferred. We took all of the data, for every student we had data on, and every teacher had their data before their students arrived, on something called the data wall, which indicates precisely, and on that data wall, there are tabs, it's an Excel spreadsheet. So, there are tabs, they have current third grade students with no data, because we haven't done the FAST yet in August, and then there was another tab that said second grade. So, the T, all of the teachers where, where we had collected data, had access to their data for the year before, right out, right away.
So, my question is, though, do you look at the end of second grade compared to the beginning of third grade? And is there a difference?
Well, like, did they digress all the summer?
Yeah.
Or, or advance?
We've looked at that, I know that that was very disturbing when I first started here, and I looked at our FAST data for kindergarten at the end of the year, and then I looked at first grade at the beginning of the year, and I said, it looked like they'd never been in school, because I was very, very concerned. And I didn't necessarily have the answers. I'm not an early childhood expert, or an early reading expert, of course. As Bethany says, you're becoming one, you know, because I've had to figure out, you know, where we're going, because that's so important. But what I, what I find fascinating about what's happened now, when I look at that data, is that it's, it's not happening as much, and we're seeing these sustained skills for students that we hadn't seen in the past, and it's very exciting to see that.
Right. And I think one of the things, as we collect the data, we're able to look at more and more different factors, and see, see what the common threads are. So, we do take a little bit of time and look at where students left at the end of the school year, but then where they come in, in the fall, and then see if there are any commonalities or anything else that we can go back to, to make a change.
I don't know that we need to spend a whole lot of time with this. All right, thank you. Making some progress.
And this was the group that had the least amount of support with Carrie.
It does look like some regression from blue became smaller.
Green became so much larger.
Exactly. Exactly.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting...
Hard to conclude.
Yes, it is. I need to see, I want to see what it looks like at the end, really, when we meet again.
I put more weight on the end of the year, because as we had said earlier, this is eight weeks of a difference. It was done in December. Last year, I think we did testing in January.
No, we followed the exact same schedule, two years in a row, because we had a long discussion about it, June thirteenth, when we met. And I asked very specifically, when you thought we should give this next assessment? And it was, it was indicated that before Christmas break would be the best time to do our second round. And I just said, okay, that's fine, and we kept going. So, it was exactly the same time last year.
It would have been nice not to have had that visit. We had to have also at the same time.
Oh, right, the comprehensive district review.
Yeah.
Mike?
Just, you said they had the least amount of support? Did I hear that right, this group?
Oh, this was the group when we originally started K-RE Thurston's work. Yeah, they didn't have the same, just where we had started.
They had it for a shorter time.
Shorter time.
Shorter period of time.
Yeah.
This is only their second year with K-RE Thurston-Minet. So, we started in the, we did a little experiment with kindergarten in February of two thousand seventeen. Then, we expanded it for seventeen-eighteen. Did we have, is this eighteen-nineteen? Yes. And the second year, we included the third and fourth because of the success we had in K, and we thought that those particular students at that time hadn't had foundations, Focus K Two, K-RE Thurston, all the things that we've put into kindergarten. Those students didn't have any of that. So, we thought we would push it in and see if we could make some gains with those students as well.
Just for clarification, just for clarification, these, when someone is rated well above, that means they are well above the national norm?
They're, no, this is not normed. This is the Fanta-Sempinell measure. So, Fanta-Sempinell or DRA, they measure through either letter or number, and they give a range for all the different categories through their measure.
Well above mean?
It means that they can read really well. They're, they've got it going on.
Well above what?
Well above, yes, the reading level of how they determine...
But the reading level of the average student in...
I assume...
In Massachusetts or what?
I would say so. Yeah, I would say that's true.
What's true?
That it's above the level of many other students in Massachusetts.
In the same grade level.
In the same grade level.
Oh, if it's in the same grade, right. Well, if it's Massachusetts, that's even better than the rest of the country.
Yes.
Take that.
Yeah, they're, they're in good shape.
Okay.
I'm, those, the thirty-seven in green and the twenty-six, even the twenty-eight in yellow are way on their way. So, we're, we're, we're good. I mean, we're, we're not enough, but we're good.
We also looked at the difference between comprehension and fluency. And when we looked at this data, our fluency had gone down. So, we're doing some fluency practice with the students as well. We need to increase their words per minute that they're reading.
Fluency is a huge issue in Wareham Public Schools. We're, we're not nearly where we need to be. So, we're making a concerted effort in that realm, because there has to be a balance. They have to not, they don't have to be faster than anybody else, but they have to be at a certain point in order to help them function as they move ahead. So, that's something we are really, really working on.
Just to be clear, when you say fluency, you mean the ability to actually verbalize a sentence, but not necessarily understand it?
Correct.
Right, within a specific amount of time.
Yes, right.
Which all factors into scores.
But that's a, but that's a pervasive, that's every grade level.
Yeah.
Fluency rate across the board.
Fluency in a foreign language doesn't mean that. Fluency if you enjoy standard.
Right.
So, can I just, so am I, maybe I'm the only one, but, so, I think it would be helpful for me to see the graph before September eighteen, because...
Well, I have that, if you'd like.
Well, I'm sure...
I mean, I don't have it in graph. I have it in data.
But all I'm saying is that if it, if it changed from June of eighteen to September of eighteen, it's not a reflection on you.
No, I get it.
It just makes a difficult job even more difficult for you.
Well, we know it's difficult.
That's the reason that I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm not...
I'm not opposed to sharing that. It's on data walls, and I can definitely gather that information without a problem.
I just think it would be interesting to see if that you're starting at a different place in September.
Than what we ended.
June, that's all, yeah.
I feel like it would be interesting to see maybe graphs for like all four years that the kids would be, or five years that the kids would be in the school, like K through four, like following the same group.
That's the last slide.
Okay. So, we're gonna get that.
You'll see, you'll see the cohort of current grade-two students that were involved in this work from kindergarten.
Now, do we notice that like the changes, it kind of like levels out? Like they get less of a chance to grow, do you think, as they get older?
Is it harder for them to make it?
It's hard, much harder as kids get older to make gains, definitely.
You can't teach an old dog new tricks or whatever.
Yes, that's a good, that's true.
So, just to add to the complexity of it all.
Thanks, Mary. I appreciate it.
So, as we know, students who do not attend a summer program will regress. So, they have some regression. So, it would be interesting also to see the ones that have attended, say, a care program and all that, if they have not actually regressed compared to someone who...
Right.
Here's the problem. Let's say you put June up there. It's going to be normed.
And the norm changes.
Yes.
Correct.
Exactly. So, you actually won't be able to see the summer reading loss, because it will be normed out of the data.
Well, yes, but you could see the level comparatively. So, for example, if you still have, if you have more than sixty-three kids in the red, for example, it's a different norm, but if you still have the same percentages, you could at least see the relationship between the percentages from year to year, and that might be helpful.
That might be helpful, but you still wouldn't be able to know what kind of slippage there was.
Correct. And their growth, which was significant? And their special education referrals and their discipline referral data, just to be consistent.
We have met with teachers also, as Bethany was saying, staff meetings to go over what we feel are minor versus major infractions, and what should be reported, and so forth. And we keep the same Swiss data that we analyze.
But your instruction to your staff didn't change for either year?
No. We might have tightened a few things up, but...
So, as you know, I've put my neck way out there and made the goal ninety percent proficient by the end of the school year. I am saying it again, because I believe we need to get there. In June of last year, when I presented the data, what we've, what was discovered was that the growth from September to December, or the proficiency rating from September to December, was very, very large, right? We were on fire at that time in a couple of our grades, K and one specifically, and two was doing well. And so, we were pretty excited about where we were. However, when we looked at the end of year, it was as though they didn't move very much, right? So, we didn't really have that same level of growth in proficiency, I shouldn't say growth, the same level of proficiency that we had if we were to compare that to September to December. So, the concern I had was, I asked myself the question, why is that? You know, what's going on? And we know that there are a number of things that go on in schools, right? That cause, you know, there are snow days, then there are emergency days for whatever the case may be, and it, right, things that disrupt the pattern. There are vacations in there, a couple that happen, right, three, actually, after we do this first round. So, there's, there's dips in the consistency of the delivery of the instruction. And because the work is so rigorous and challenging, you know, I'm sure that people, you know, you can be, it can get weary, right? They get weary after a while. And then, any, anything else that goes on in school life, which is really, really dynamic, may cause some of that. So, one of the areas that I've asked everyone to take a look at, when we met on June thirteenth, and we analyzed and figured out exactly what we would, and planned what we would do for this current year, that was one of the things that was brought up. What is it that we need to do to maintain and to continue to move forward from December until June? So, when I collected our current proficiency ratings and compared them to the same timeframe of our proficiency ratings last year, as you can see, those are the results. I still think we can get to ninety percent.
So, it's the K, obviously, that jumps out at you. And the ninety percent is wonderful, and the sixty-eight is not so much unfortunate and disappointing because it's down, it's because the same group of educators were able to, with a different cohort, were able to do ninety percent a year earlier, and it dropped significantly. Does it, does that make sense to you? Their, their expertise in, in giving this new kind of instruction is, they've got a year more of experience doing it, and yet their results were significantly inferior. How, how do you explain that?
Well, they're not in the same groupings.
I understand, different cohort.
The teachers are...
Oh, not only a different cohort, different grouping meaning?
So, the teachers were...
Oh, sorry. So, this year, I reconfigured kindergarten anyway, because preschool came in. So, I have kindergarten teachers in my B corridor and in my C. So, we changed the groupings of who's working together. So, the teams have changed from last year.
You tried to fix something that was working beautifully?
Well, yeah, we also had a lot of, there was, there was a few different experiments last year going on during this time. So, we had boost, which was four teachers, right? Then, we had two teachers, because it was experiment, and that's the data that was shown. We had two teachers doing a lot of foundations and less of boost. And then, we had four other teachers using a combination of both. This year, everybody is following the same lesson and the same agenda, and they're switching starting in October groups. So, it is a different dynamic this year than it was last year. So, I think that we need to wait and just see what happens in June, because it's been eight weeks. These teachers are working together in a different capacity, and they're working well together.
Whether on here or there, I'll be fascinated.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. Oh, any other questions? Okay, so, this is that slide where it follows our kindergarten, starting in the year sixteen-seventeen. So, we started the K-RE Thurston work in February of two thousand seventeen. And each of the bars shows growth and where they are against the norm, using FAST testing, not DRA or Fanta-Sempinell, but just the straight-out FAST testing. And those are the results so far of the same group of students moving through.
Sixty-three is a powerful number. Doesn't it, doesn't it suggest, almost contrary to what people said earlier, that you can have an impact as they get older? Isn't that exciting?
It's very exciting.
If you give them the right foundation, they can accelerate from there, which is exactly the opposite of what you probably thought ten years ago, that that wasn't possible.
Right.
That's the most exciting part of that chart. And it's just, it's almost a repudiation of conventional knowledge. Wisdom, excuse me, conventional wisdom, which isn't necessarily wise.
We still have a lot of work to do. However, it seems at the moment that we're, we are, in fact, impacting the future of the children of Wareham Public Schools in a positive way. So, yes, I have chills a little bit.
It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send it to us, though, because I don't have half the...
Michelle, I believe Michelle sent it to you this morning.
No, we'll send it out now.
Oh, I'll send it out to you, yes. No problem.
I would just like to thank the principals, Dr. Schwam, and more importantly, our teachers for all the work that they've been doing. Certainly can see evidence of it and really appreciate.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to go beyond ten o'clock?
Not yet. Okay, next on the agenda is the report of the business manager.
What's it?
I know, Paul.
How do you top?
I can't top that. Can I next time go before Andrea? She always has something really good. Did you shut that?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
It was on here. I don't know if it's still on here. Did you put it on yourself? Yeah. When? Probably today. Today? Mm-hmm, tonight, actually. You did? Yeah. I didn't see it. That's all right. Let's see if I go to the website. If you want to go. Okay, okay. So, it's not on here. Then... Michelle, where did we find it before? We went to the website. Oh, I remember where we went. Here? Yeah. Try that. You signed in, I think, and then you just went to the website. Okay, it's not here. Sorry. I was gonna try to put it up so people could see. It's not, it's not there. So, this is another monthly, semi-bimonthly report. We're trying to get back on a schedule. So, it, we, our last report covered us through December first. This one is kind of a December second or December first through January thirtieth. And then, hopefully, we'll be doing it each month. But if you, if you look at the summary page on the front, it will show you the major categories, what our budget was for nineteen to date, what our expenditures were or are, what our ending balances are for nineteen, and then the percent expended. And then, it jumps over to FY eighteen, and it shows the same information. Coincidentally, you know, for FY nineteen, we've expended forty-three point two percent of our budget, and in FY eighteen, it was forty-three point oh seven. So, we're, we're pretty close. Things are kind of just moving along.
Things are kind of just moving along status quo like they did last year. The budget itself doesn't show, like I said, a significant change over last year. At this time, we're pretty spot-on percentage-wise. The same point as we were last year. The remaining balance at this time is sixteen million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand of unspent funding, of which ten million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars is encumbered in remaining salaries. So we have encumbered salaries, so that money's put aside, and we're spending that number down each payroll. This leaves an estimated six point two million of available funding through June, the end of June. And that number stayed pretty consistent over the last few months, which is good to see, that it's not dropping fast. We're still working with the same number, and we're already sixty percent through the school year. There weren't really any areas of concern if you went through it. There was a couple areas that, like at mine, the building and utilities account is slightly in the red. I mean, mine as a whole is not. And that's primarily due to just the moves, the moving, the shifting, all the changes in the building. The other area that popped out was the high school supplies and materials account. At this point, I'm not quite sure why we're way over budget, other than we also dropped the budget. So last year, the supplies and materials were two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred and sixty. This year, they're only one ninety-nine. So with the cut in the budget, the supplies and materials are still needed to go forward. Other than that, there were no significant outbursts. I know special ed has been coming down rather than going up. We're bringing more kids back. So that's, those are some of the areas that I watched, the special ed, the utilities. We're watching very closely. We've put a slight freeze on spending. Dr. Shaverhood and I go through each order to make sure it's something that's necessary, that they have money in the budget to spend. So we are watching it cautiously, so we can end the year in the positive. I mean, I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have on the report?
Well, the first thing I would want to say is thank you for the, for the report, and the level of detail is...
I mean, I'd love to give you all the deep detail, but just in printing one school, one school is like seventy-five pages. So, I mean, you can imagine how large this report would be.
No, I mean, this is, this is good.
So it gives you a good view of what each department or budget area is looking like?
Well, I'm talking about the next page that, yeah, that tells us, you know, by school, by department.
Yes.
What's being done.
I don't know if there's any other questions. I don't know if there's something you'd like to see differently or in addition to what's coming?
No, I think it looks great. Looks great. I just have two questions. One is, I noticed that there was only six point five percent spent on the junior, senior co-op. Why is that?
On the pass? Is that what we call it now, pass?
Well, the line item says junior, senior. Or the... So we also have a day program, I think.
Right. Honestly, off the top of my head, I don't know. I can certainly get you that answer.
Well, it's similar to last year, percentage-wise. So I did look at that.
I think some of the salaries come out of revolving. We have some of the school choice, and so some of the expense would come that way. And the, for the day school, it, I believe it comes out of the special ed area in the high school salary, budget salary. So that's why you would not see any deductions for the teacher coming out of this one. It's just coming out of a different line.
Okay. But why is it then, what is that for then? I think it's like a hundred fifteen thousand or something.
One nineteen. So I believe it's for the pass, it's for the pass program. They don't call it junior, senior co-op anymore. And I know she just...
It's a degree, I mean, a diploma they get though, right? The junior, senior.
Mm-hmm. But I can certainly find out.
Thank you. And my second question is, just out of curiosity, I saw that there's twenty thousand something that goes into East. So what's that paying for? Are we actually still heating that place?
We have to keep the electric on, and we have to keep the water for the sprinkler systems. And we do pay a custodian to do weekly checks on the building.
Is there any plan for the future of that building? To do something with it, or...
We have been approached several times to see about leasing it, and we've entered into some discussions, and then they seem to fall out. So we're still looking at what would be a good use for the building. It has to be educational, and that's, that's one of the drawbacks. But yes, if we would find a, somebody to lease it, we would be very happy to lease it. Because it's a beautiful building, absolutely beautiful.
You could go to preschool back there.
We could. I'm not sure it's going to be large enough pretty soon. Our preschool keeps growing.
You're saying encumbered salaries. That's all you encumber? You don't encumber any student services?
No, we, that, that encumbered number is salaries. We have also encumbered all the special ed tuitions. We have encumbered all of our reoccurring expenses, like utilities that we know are coming every month, or like copier leases, things that we know are a monthly charge. They're all encumbered.
The vast majority of it is probably salaries, but there's a lot of other stuff that you do encumber.
Yes.
Okay. And you, and you still have six million left?
Yes.
Okay. Fair amount of discretion. The student services number is, is an impressive reduction from last year. Is it, is it as impressive as it looks, or is there some timing involved at thirteen, excuse me, it's about thirteen percent difference?
Well, if you look at the budget number, the budget number's also higher.
No, I understand.
So...
Melissa? Talk.
I was getting ready to get off.
You talk.
Thank you.
I think that there's a couple different pieces. So money is coming from different places, because we've been a little bit smarter about how we're spending our money. We used to have a lot of tuitions that weren't in grants, and now we're using the grant money to fund some of the tuitions for out-of-district placements. Prior to me arriving, a lot of positions were in grants, which is kind of unstable, because if the grant money goes away, the position, we lose the position, and we have to figure out how to fund it. And we were also spending a tremendous amount of money on contracting people in to do roles that we've now hired as positions, that has saved us a tremendous amount of money. You know, as you know, and I've talked to you guys about this a million times, it's, you never know. Like, right now, we're in great shape, because we are actively looking at, and I hate to even say it without like knocking on something, because we've been able to really look at our programming, make it better, bring kiddos back into our programs, because they're strong enough to support them. And we're having, our programming is now looking, in fact, I'll just use an example. The other day, we had somebody come and observe one of our programs from one of the local collaboratives, who said that the programming that we had at mine at Forest for the therapeutic learning center was exactly what they have at this collaborative, and that she wouldn't recommend moving any of those children, because she thought that they were all getting exactly what they needed in that program. So hearing things like that from collaboratives that want our money, but are saying, you guys are doing the same thing that we do, so we really don't think we need to move anybody, is pretty inspiring for us. So we've had a couple of shifts that way, in the fact that we're able to kind of maintain more students. And I think that we're just better utilizing extended evaluations, being a little bit smarter about our referral systems, and really building more capacity with our own staff, instead of having to reach out to contract out with other people.
That's what I was going to ask you. How many, approximately how many students have you brought in from out of district?
Since I've been here...
Well, no, I was just thinking...
In general, this year. We've brought back four, but we have also, it's a constant juggling, right? So we have some that will move. And when you're in a collaborative and you move, the district that you move into picks that bill up. If you're in a private school and you move to another district, my responsibility is to pay that tuition into the next year. So it's like a balancing act. And then we might get a student who moves into the district who we have to pick up a tuition on. We have some students that are moving, some students that are stepping down from more restrictive to less restrictive, that saves us money. Some students that are coming out of cost share residentials with the Department of Children and Families, that we were paying more than a hundred thousand dollars for, that we're now able to step down into programs that are half that. So it's a lot of, but I mean, tomorrow, something else could walk through the door, so you never know.
And I guess my last question for you, and thank you for being here, is that have you been able to absorb these kids that are coming back with existing staff?
We have been, because I think we've built enough capacity now. You know, we've had some that we cannot, I mean, we're not, never going to be able to maintain everybody. But I think that we have done a tremendous job this year with what has been given to us, because we've had an awful lot of DCF students placed in our care in our community that we're now responsible for. I think we've done a tremendous job of absorbing them into our, our public school system with the programming that we have. So I do, I do think that the capacity of our staff is what is keeping our programs alive, and the support that we're getting from the principals, and the superintendent, and everybody else that supports our programs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just one last question, please. I'm always pleased, but also surprised to see transportation so stable. Is it, is it as stable in terms of cost as it appears?
Yes and no. I mean, we, it is, for the most part, but we also, this is the first year that we've charged a fee, so that is somewhat offsetting some of the additional costs, if there are any.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
I would ask your approval for the bill and payroll warrant, including would be bill warrant on February 14th in the amount of one hundred, three thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Another one on February 9th in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred, seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And payroll week ending February 2nd, eight hundred, sixty-one thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and three cents. I would ask you to approve all the bill warrants and payroll that's listed.
Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Five zero zero.
And I would like to share with you that the Department of Education has let us know that the Wareham High School has been selected to participate in the 2019 Massachusetts Behavior Survey and the Youth Health Survey. Our information will be coming to parents and guardians as we work through this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Record it. Sorry, Mike.
I'll be vague, but do we have a new hire that's worth mentioning tonight?
Oh, yes, thank you. I should have had that under good news.
I was going to say, but I didn't know if you wanted to bring it up now.
Yes, I am absolutely thrilled and honored to announce that we have a new middle school principal. Mrs. Kotay has accepted the position, and she, we're just very happy to have her join us for...
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so now, report of the school committee. Does anyone have anything? I know Laura de Paul's review committee was postponed.
Postponed, please. We're going to talk about the school building.
Sure, hold on, I think Mike had something.
I was going to mention the legislative breakfast for the school committee. I don't know who's, who's mentioned they're going to go. I really wanted to go, but I can't get out of work tomorrow, there's no way. But it's available if you guys are interested.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
I will be attending, because I'm lucky. I don't have to work like everybody else. And I will report back. For those of you not familiar with this, it is primarily for the legislators of the Cape and Wareham and Bourne to meet with the school committee members, superintendents, and other management staff, and answer questions. And the usual question is, why haven't they implemented the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations? And they came very close last year, and I think there's reason to believe with Governor Baker's support, we may get even closer, if not do it. And that would be a tremendously important thing, especially for Wareham. But the devil will be in the details. I will report back. The only other thing I wanted to mention at Joyce's request is, so to speak, a report of the school building committee. The school building committee itself does not meet all that frequently, every month, six weeks, something like that. We are the most important committee in the sense that, and the only really official committee in the sense that we have to approve everything, including all the bills that are, that are going to start coming due. But there's a tremendous amount of highly detailed work that has now started behind the scenes. I've been involved in, I think, five or six, excuse me, I shouldn't say involved, I've observed more than been involved in five or six different committee meetings, all related to things like interior design, exterior design, security, utilities, energy, you name it. All these things have to be considered, so that, as it was reminded, I think that one of the head architects said, when you're trying to build something that has to last fifty years, you want to get it right. So we are very seriously thinking about getting it right. And we're also incredibly cognizant of trying to make it as inexpensive for the taxpayers as possible, not only to build, but also to run. So today, there was quite a long meeting, probably lasted almost two hours, just talking about all energy efficiency. Those lights, they won't exist. Everything's LED, for example. Everything will be controlled by a computer system. What was that? Oh, okay. Everything will be controlled by a computer system, whether it's security, alarms, you name it. The computers will be doing it. We had some amusing conversations led by the superintendent about how teachers love to play with thermostats. But that is also going to be controlled. But one of the biggest issues for us that we have not fully addressed is the amount of air conditioning that will be in the building as compared to a system which cools it and completely dehumidifies, but is not truly air conditioning. Whether it will, in the end, save enough money, it's literally the difference between fifty-five degree air and sixty-eight degree air. You learn all sorts of little things as you're in these meetings. So, bottom line is, we're moving ahead, we are on schedule, we are below budget, and we hope to have a grand opening sometime in late 2021.
I guess questions?
Yeah. When are we going to name it?
Yeah, well, the school committee will name it, okay? And as, I think, the short answer is, I don't, have no idea. I haven't touched that with a ten-foot pole, because some people may react. I think the safest thing is, you know, the Wareham Elementary School comes to mind, because we have the Wareham Middle School and the Wareham High School, so that seems to be the easiest way to get around that. But I do think that there are important people in this community over the course of its history that could be honored in a number of different ways, including having the Innovation Center names, and the fields named, and other areas named. And we're paying a lot of attention to design work, even including perhaps having a map of Wareham in the foyer. A lot of things are being considered, but the actual name of the building has not been discussed.
And just to be clear, I mean, because there's kind of misinformation out there, I mean, people are speaking about it, but it has not been named yet.
Absolutely not, and it will be the school committee that will name that building.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you. So there is a lot of exciting stuff going on at these committee meetings, so that's why I think it's important that the architect and the project manager come and give us an update.
Yes, and I also think there'll be times over the course of the next couple of years where the public will absolutely be invited, encouraged to come and see what's going on and ask questions. and ask questions, et cetera. So stay tuned. That will be a part of the process.
And you check out the website. We just uploaded some other details about the building, and so we'll update that periodically. But I do know that some new things went on last week.
Okay. Is there anything that was not anticipated 48 hours before? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1771.62]